Recognizing that the April 14, 2015 minutes were updated by Mr. Kibler and we're seeing a few members, can I get a motion on it?
I will move, as soon as I get there. I'm coming backwards up the computer here. I'll move the minutes. Come on, guys. For November 18, 2014, regular. December 9, 2014, budget, regular. February 10, 2015, regular. And April 14, 2015, regular.
I'll sign him out.
Do you have a motion to second any discussion on any of the minutes? Let me see, none? No comments?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. De Colito?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Zoschak?
Yes, on November, December, April. We're closed on February.
Eric Riley?
Yes. How long for it? The next guy about this public portion, at this point in time, we'll open it up to the public. A reminder, please keep it to three minutes. We have a lot of individuals here this evening, and I want to make sure we get to everybody. At one appearance per individual per public portion, we do have a second public portion shortly, a little bit later on in the meeting. So at this point in time, does anybody have any questions? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
I brought some of my neighbors here from Lower Berkshire Valley.
Just come on up, give your name and address.
My name is Robert Boundan, 409 West Dewey. I have some concerned neighbors here. Anybody from that area down there? Truck traffic, huge concern, huge quality of life issue. I have video footage, I did not bring it. We have Nick Abellas, Doug Hall, numerous, 46 truck traffic, probably more than Route 80, between 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM, 60 trucks. That's a huge issue. In addition to Roxbury, digging across the street, the quality of life in the last 10 years there has substantially declined. So I'm wondering if we could, I know we have to coexist with these people, but I'm wondering, before anybody rents commercial property, is there any letter of intent what they're going to do with that property? Like, I'm going to move in 60 trucks, or we're going to run them down the road at 2:00 in the morning? Or...
Trucks in itself, we can't control, but if they're coming from businesses that are operating during, outside of our hours of operation, then we have, so those companies are names that you can identify?
Absolutely. I can't open my windows. I can't sleep at night.
Mr. Rassley?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Kibler, you reached out to me last week, and I had our code enforcement officer look into it right away, and the police department as well. The code enforcement officer has sent out notice of violations to the businesses. And those violations are because the business is within 200 feet of a residential property. So if you're familiar with that, he has limitations on his hours of operation. So they've already got a notice of violation, says you're in violation of our ordinances. You have 10 days to beat the problem, or your next issue could be issued a summons. And that summons is a court matter. So that's what happens after that. So we have issued violations. That was the end of last week in regards to one of the operators that you were talking about. I'll check up on the other ones that you raised to me today, I wasn't familiar with that one, but we'll check up on that as well, too. As to the way it works, if an individual has approvals for certain types of operations, they do still have to come into the township and confirm that those operations will work within our code enforcement, our codes. However, if the approvals are for like a trucking outfit, then they're going to be permitted for a trucking outfit. But they still have restrictions within certain hours if they're within 200 feet of a residential property.
An arbitrary truck may take control outside of speeding and doesn't have...
I understand, I understand that. But these operating businesses there, there has to be some kind of reprieve. I have to be able to sleep at least three or four hours a night in my own residence.
We understand, that's why...
We under... Yeah. That's why we have those hours of operations for certain types of businesses within the
township if they have impacts on individuals. So this is the first, we're hearing about it. Sounds as if Mr. Rass has already taken steps to address the businesses that are outside. You mentioned digging across the street. Roxbury's not digging across the street.
Roxbury Concrete.
Oh, county concrete.
County concrete, we're digging across the street. So it's not the noise, it's the dust and the diesel blowing in my window.
Okay. If there's... Did you contact Mr. Kibler?
No, I was not, I was not aware of the dust complaints really until today. I think there was some concern about how close they were approaching of the roadway. But he also has limitations on his hours as well, too, under his approvals with the township. I'm not 100% certain, but I'm going to say they're probably 7:00 AM, but I could confirm that. And if he's in violation, then obviously...
I live across the street, and...
You have to come up and give us your name and address. Well, let me finish him and get that.
Yeah, these are all, this is all relative to the same group of problems that we're having over there. Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Robert Boundan, he gave me a call last week, and I knew Chris was involved in trying to get something done with it, so. But I did, you didn't say anything about Mr. Kibler when we talked. Well, there's, there's a lot of problems on that Lower Berkshire Valley that are affecting our quality of life. And I understand we have to coexist with these businesses, they bring jobs, but I would think they also have to coexist with the taxpaying resident.
We'll address it. Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Clara Bauchal. I live at 185 Berkshire Valley Grove, right across the street from the sand bed. I've been there for almost 30 years. The sand mining operation on Berkshire Valley Grove has been a good, had been a good neighbor for many years. The trees on the property hid the view of the pit and held back the dust and noise. Several months ago, the township granted permission and permitted a change in the operations. Truckloads of trees were removed. Lots of truckloads of trees were removed. The sand dust is now unbearable to the neighborhood, and the constant beeping of the truck alarms goes on for hours. The view of the property is like a lunar landscape. The housing values surely have been impacted, and the health concerns of the sand silicates is a big concern. I can see the machine operators from my house, many of them wear dust masks. Should the rest of the homeowners wear them as well? Another, now to the historic landmark which runs through the property, the Morris Canal, which appears to have been dug up. The canal runs roughly parallel to Berkshire Valley Road in this area, in the same area where digging and tree removal has and is still happening on the property. Under federal and New Jersey law, the landowner is free to make changes to historic landmarks only if public funding, licensing, or permits were not involved. The National Park Service, which administers the national historic landmarks in New Jersey, may recommend to private owners various preservation actions, but owners are not obligated to carry out these recommendations. They are free to make whatever changes they wish if public funding, licensing, or permits are not involved. I'm sure that the current construction changes on the property require permits. If so, violation of federal and state laws may have been violated. I, we, are asking that all the work on the site be stopped until the township can address the concerns of air and sound pollution. The view due to the removal of the trees and the possible destruction of the landmark site can be investigated, that can be investigated, and remediation of the site can be made by you. I invite each and every one of you to stand in my living room and see exactly what I see every day. I love Roxbury. I don't plan on moving. I want to stay, but we as a group, having countered our problems as a team that I've never had in the 30 years I've been here.
You just told us what a great place it was to live.
Coffee. Exactly. Coffee, are you here? This is a part of, all of that is a part of all of us.
Thank you for your comments. This is the first that's coming to us, so Chris, Mr. Rass, start looking into this. We will look into those.
Thank you for your time.
Can I copy that letter? Yes.
Sure.
Okay, that would be fantastic. And we'll send that over to our people, and we will...
You did well, you did very well. Wish to be heard on any issues? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Kidmore with the Raritan Headwaters Association. This is Angela Gorska from our staff. She's got a couple of slides to provide. I'm going to, I'd like to address with you this evening some of the stream monitoring we've been conducting over the last three years at Ledgewood Brook, just downstream of the Fenimore landfill, so the slides will make it a little easier to follow that.
Mr. Kidmore, I know you're aware, but there is a three-minute limitation. We did not schedule you for our presentation.
I understand, Mr. Mayor. I'll be, I'm going to go through these just as quick as I can, and that's why I got you the slides.
Thank you.
Raritan Headwaters has been conducting stream monitoring for 21 years now. Our monitoring is certified by DEP as Tier D data, so it is used for regulatory purposes. DEP uses it to meet their reporting requirements under the Federal Clean Water Act. On the front of here, you'll see, on the front, the first slide, you'll see a slide of Fenimore. Dump, the location of our monitoring, monitoring sites there in yellow. If you turn the page, you'll see a map of where the site is. This is the local audience, obviously you all know where Ledgewood Brook is, so I'm not going to go through that. If you go to the third slide, this graphic shows you the score on the New Jersey impairment score for the stream monitoring. We're monitoring ventic macroinvert rates, it's biological monitoring for Ledgewood Brook for the last three years. This is a scale from 0 to 30. I'm not really sure why we go to 35 in here. The scale is 0 to 30. 0 means the site is completely dead. 30 is the perfect, that's as good as a score as you can get. For the last three years in a row, Ledgewood Brook has scored an 18 on the New Jersey impairment score. That means it's moderately impaired. I realize that moderate impairment doesn't sound all that significant, which is the primary reason I'm here tonight. I had seen some reporting in newspapers that concerned me that some folks were getting the wrong message about what, what this data means, okay? A score of 18, if you were down in the Shannock or significantly further down in the Raritan, would not surprise me in the Headwaters area like Ledgewood Brook. This is appalling. Most of our similarly situated sites score between 27 and a 30, which is non- impaired, which is exactly where I would expect this site to be. If you turn the page, the next site on here is Flanders Brook Site 1, which is adjacent to Route 206. You all know 206. This is not exactly what you would call a pristine site, but if you turn to the next page, you'll see the graph of the scores for the last two years of Flanders Brook, as well as a photograph of the site. Two years ago, it scored a 30. Last year, a 27. That's what I would expect in a Headwaters location. If you turn the page, you can see our Drake's Brook Site, number one, which is just downstream of the confluence of Drake's Brook and Ledgewood Brook. In 2014, that scored a 3. Again, that's what I would expect. So just trying to put that 18 score in some context. The other thing you need to know about that 18 score is that some years ago, 2007? 2007, DEP did similar monitoring at this location. Obviously, that's before the dump was reopened, and at that time, the site scored a 24. Again, not a perfect 30, but...
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
It was in three minutes.
And we just take the recommendations from this, as well as our environmental commission as they implement that, and we'll find out testing.
Okay, very good. And we've been, as you probably noticed, we've been in contact with your environmental commission, which we'll continue to do. Mr. Schmidt's already heard the presentations.
Yes. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any issues? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir, is that...
Yes. My name is Modi Almakiass.
Yeah, come up to him.
I'm a second lung fellow, drive from Sakasana. This is very new to me. I was a businessman in the community for 25 years. You all know that leadership is a key factor in a successful failure of a society, of business, pretty much everything in touch. So when I heard something that really troubled me and decided to follow, so I heard that our mayor, and I want to keep it on the record, that I don't know personally, was, recused himself in the whole subject, I think, that is the worst thing that we've seen in this town, probably in history. He troubled me. Every organization needs a leader to lead, to push us forward. Unfortunately, we lack leadership today as a society, we all know that. But today, I want to look at this small little picture of my town. I invested enormous amount of money in my home, my health, the health of my children, extremely important to me. And to think for a moment that the one man, my mayor, supposed to be there and lead the charge, recused himself from this whole process.
I just should have your facts straight. I recused myself from the Highlands Council, not this municipal body. I've stayed in and been active in everything to deal with Fenimore since State 1.
And I owe you an apology because I received certain information that troubled me so much because I said, where is, that's wonderful, that's why I'm here. I said, you know, where is our mayor on all of this? Because I happen to work in 37 different states, I do business in certain towns, I involve the mayors directly, and I know how good leadership can make a huge difference in smaller towns.
On the Highlands Council, I had to recuse myself. As mayor, I did not have to refuse myself, and I continue to act on, on everything to deal with Fenimore since State 1.
So, that's wonderful, and I'll share that information. So when, when it pertains to the, to this issue, you did not refuse yourself from, from the meetings and the discussions?
I refused myself from Highlands Council meetings, not Roxbury Council meetings. I performed all my duties as part of the township.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
That is mine for Holly. I heard somewhere that the state was considering shutting the ramp down by, is this the barn that goes into Main Street?
There was some rumor of that. We've sent a letter suggesting it. I guess when I wasn't here, there was a presentation made by the police department opposing it. I think it was something that, not sure where it came from, but it, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, well, yeah, I agree, so I hope it just goes away.
Yes.
I guess you could encourage you to go away.
I actually made a note to follow up on that in a couple of months, so it doesn't pop up again.
Yeah. In tonight's package, there's some reservations regarding bonded indebtedness. I know you've been trying to pay off our township debt, you're doing an excellent job with that. Anyway, does this have any long-term impact, or are we going to be carrying it longer?
Not, not with municipal, with municipal budget. This is strictly the sewer water utilities, just the utilities, which are user, are user-based.
Right. It's going to be their fees.
Correct. And we're not necessarily anticipating any fee increases as of now, there may be something down the line, but we haven't raised any sewer fees in, like, they went down once in the last 20 years.
Five, five dollars.
Yeah.
Looking at the checks on page 102, you're reimbursing Drake's Hill for snow and for electric. Is there a period of time involved? A year, or is it a fraction of a year?
That's for the, that's for the year.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any issue? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Over at the Lazar's Drive in Ledgewood, my question today has to do with the news that was on your website regarding the, the site outage that they said that lasted up to three days. Could you expand on what's going on, and is it operating now?
The system is not operating, like it indicates on the website. They are, they are replacing a piece of equipment within the scrubber operations. They're anticipating two to three days. So that's what I...
Okay. What troubles me about this is, do you know exactly what they're replacing?
It's a, it's a filter within the system itself. I understand that.
It's called a demister pad.
That's what it says on the website, yes.
And what it does is, it reduces, if not eliminates, entrapment of liquid droplets or particulates. In particular, here, we're worried about sulfur oxides. And what concerns me with this is, I don't know why they have to replace it. There's usually two reasons why you have to do it. Either one, it plugs, it clogs, it has to be cleaned, or two, it corrodes away. And I think what happened is it probably corroded away, because that's what happened to other pieces in the system, because they use inferior metals. My point being is that these sulfur oxides are pretty nasty. What they do is they form particulates in the air. When people breathe them, they embed deep into your lungs, they affect people with asthema, they affect people with heart disease, and they've even been linked to premature mortality. And where I'm going with this is that, you know, how long did this operate with this demister pad in a, I'll call it deficient manner, until they decided to inspect it and say, this, this needs changing? And, you know, I'll expand further on it, the whole, the system in the whole. I feel it doesn't have the appropriate amount of safeguards or redundancy to stay online. We're always hearing that the system is down. Last week, it was down twice. I would think a system that's important would have those features built into it. We would eliminate, we would eliminate the downtime, because frankly, I'm tired of hearing, you know, there's an odor or a spike, oh, someone forgot to turn a valve, it was, was it a five, a five-second spike or a 10-second spike? I don't care what it is. I didn't move to Roxbury to have to be exposed to these chemicals. And whether, you know, there are concentrations that are harmful or not, chemical exposure results in health effects. It results in premature death over time. It affects cells on a cellular level. I don't want to have to live like that. I don't want to have to hear that. I don't want to hear the excuse. We need a system that's more bulletproof. And you guys wanted this cap, you guys wanted this mitigation system, you got to advocate for that.
I'm sorry, did you hear that? Thank you for your comments. Okay.
I know there's some testing being done on the streams. Last time, you said there was a test plant that was on your website. I scoured your whole website, I didn't see it.
No, you're, you're totting it up, but I will have Mr. Rass repost that.
Yeah, we're actually right now testing the streams, our department's testing the streams. If it's not this week, it'll be next week. I don't know why that's not on the website, but it's, it's the same samples that we did last April as well, too.
Okay, I'll look for it, then. Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Um, there is for Mallard Drive, Lexington, New Jersey. First of all, I commend you, Mr. Rass, for the presentation, and it's great. I have some suggestions for you. If we could get the realtors to come out and give us their, their data sheets on how high the prices of houses are going up in Roxbury because of all the development, that would be appreciated. And, second, how many houses are for sale? If you could get that, I'd love to see that, too. All right, next, the water test results. Where are they being taken?
You mean the locations?
Location.
They have, they have seven monitoring wells, and they're taking them from all of those locate, all of those locations are the, dominantly the toe of the landfill. I think it's okay, we could already get a map from the DEP and both sides as well, too, if we haven't already done that.
The wells are taking in surface water. How about the stream water up by the catch basin? Can somebody test that water there?
The wells are groundwater.
Yes.
Surface, you said surface, okay.
Groundwater, there's deep groundwater and there's surface wells, and that's surface wells, because they're less than 50 feet deep. All right, next, last Friday, we had a spike that, that went up to 1,000 or so. I almost passed out coming to the grass. Any explanation what took place with that spike?
Yes, it was typical. We have a co-located unit on that, at the, we have a co-located unit on number eight, and as you know, from time to time, as we've explained, we put on the website, the machines that are doing 99.9% accurate readings have a spike, so we have a co-located unit. As I, as I responded to a resident who made this inquiry, at the time that that was spiking, the other co-located unit was zero to five parts per billion during that entire time. So the protocol, let's go over the protocol again. The protocol is for me to immediately contact the site, which I did, ask them if there are any operational issues. I called the site manager, there were no operational issues. I called Emilcott, got verification that the second monitor at that location was reading zero to five parts per billion.
So you're telling me one is reading 1,000 and one is reading five?
Correct.
I suggest we replace the 1,000 monitor.
Well, we've been through this, we replace them on a regular basis, but these monitors do a lot of work.
It, it's too far a difference, Chris. You know, you don't go from five to 1,000. It's too far a difference. Something is wrong, and I, I suggest you strongly look into this. My last question is the scrubbers. The two 500 CFM scrubbers, are they in online?
Yes, the scrubbers are still online.
Oxid, the oxidosis. This is online in conjunction with this new 2,000 one?
Yeah, it's correct.
Correct. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Would anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Warren Casterato, 21 Sanma Road, Landy. Mr. Kibler from the Raritan Headwaters Association just delivered a stunning news, disturbing news, about what he feels is a great concern about water contamination due to Fenimore landfill. I just want to express that. I am personally puzzled why he had to come here during the public comment session rather than being invited to do a presentation. I am asking the town council to please invite Mr. Kibler back to do a full presentation. The public has the right to know exactly all the information that he has, and we should hear a full report.
And all that information has been provided to everybody. They gave a, a presentation to our environmental commission, as well as the Highlands Council, and we've attempted to share even the report itself, and we've taken a lot of what was said in that report and addressed it, so I think that's comfortable.
But I think a public report is, is absolutely necessary, so please consider it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any issue? Please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Laurel Whitney, 711 Drive in Sakasana. And on April 22nd, the scrubber was down for almost all day, yet there were no alerts issued. Is there any reason for that?
The protocol is that we don't send alerts, we put them on our Facebook, we, we put it on our website, and now we've been putting it on the green light, so you can see we're right on the top that the system is down. We continue to monitor them, and if any of our monitoring protocol is exceeded, then you would get an alert.
So this particular alert that there was maintenance was on your Facebook page?
It would be...
I didn't see it on your Facebook page.
Well, the direction I send out is Facebook, website, green light. So I will check on that particular one, it should be on Facebook.
I do see an alert for the, the demister shutdown for today, but I don't see one for the April 22nd.
I will go back and check on that.
Yes, because it's disturbing that people should have the right to make their own decisions about their health and their child's health, whether they decide to let their children or their pets out to play that day, or whether they choose to take a walk. Some people are more sensitive to these gases than others, and we know, as it happened in the past with maintenance, it is possible that somebody won't shut off the valve when gases are released, or the fact that the scrubber's net itself may also cause additional gases. So I would really recommend that, I'm glad you did it last time, but it really needs to be done consistently every time that there is an alert, every time there's system maintenance. Allow people to take control over their own house.
Rest assured, the direction was consistent, whether the implementation was consistent, I will find out tomorrow.
Well, implementation is everything.
Absolutely right.
Because if people can't see it, it doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any issue? Please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Happy hearts, Summit Lane, Sakasana. First, I would ask that my minutes be allowed to be given to Mr. Kibler.
We don't allow more than, somebody to speak for more than my time to, for personally. If you could come up and finish up on the second part of the, second part.
Well, I doubt we'll be able to give you in-depth the...
Actually, it was down to the last, it was down to the last slide, but... Okay, I'm sorry.
There, there also would be questions that people might have that would arise from his report. And you mentioned that he wasn't on the agenda, but we have requested in the past... past, residents have requested, and that request has been ignored. I feel that maybe there is a reason that you don't want, like you said, to be fully included in the record.
No, actually, the reports are part of public record. You can open them tomorrow. So they're, they're readily available, every aspect of it, including the, including our environmental commission, the position that they've taken on it, and agree with the, with the Raritan.
Did you attend any of these?
With the Raritan, they gave it during the Highlands Council.
Did you attend any of these presentations?
I was just saying, they, they showed it at the Highlands Council. But I, I recused, but I stayed in the, in the.
Has everybody on the council registered for it?
I, I think so. I don't know if everybody's watched the tape, but I think everybody's read the reports in, in support of our environmental commission, which agrees with the continued monitoring. I, I don't know what we're searching for here. We're on the same page. Because if Mr. Kibler is saying it one more time, you know, that's a different story. But we're actually on the same page of continued monitoring that we recognize that there is an issue up there. And there are, I'm not sure, Mr. Kibler may agree or disagree, but there's, there's probably mitigated circumstances that may have caused this situation that may be, have been repaired over the last year. We hope that's true. But we, that's why we want to monitor. And, and I know Mr. Rass is working with some, with the Highlands on monitoring as well. So we're, we're, we're not on separate pages, though, Mr.
All right, I'll just give you a quick statement. My feeling is, I've always believed actions speak louder than words. But now I feel that inaction speaks louder still. From the very beginning, residents have expressed their concerns over what was happening at Fenmore and the environmental impact. I pleaded with you to be our advocates and protect this community. It seems to me you are forceful advocates of the governor and the GEP. It's particularly disappointing to me to feel this way, because I was raised to have great respect for people in your position, public servants who devote countless hours to their community. My father served our town at Pompkin Lakes as a councilman, and later he served the state as an assemblyman. So I know firsthand the dedication it takes. My brother served as mayor of Pompkin Lakes, and it was through his advocacy and dogged perseverance that the cleanup of the DuPont factory and surrounding areas it had contaminated began. Unfortunately, nearly 30 years later, that town continues to be plagued by contamination and serious health issues. I still believe that this community can be spared the same fate if we continue to pressure the GEP, solicit the EPA, and trap this stuff out.
Thank you for your comments.
I still have a little bit. That was the only permanent solution.
It's only fair to everybody else in this state within the.
It'll just be another one. Identify well contamination due to the Coen's landfill, which has been closed to Ivey for over 20 years. We're already seeing water quality impairment. I can only imagine what will happen to, if Fenmore is allowed to continue as it is for the next 20 years. I really don't think that's the legacy that all of you would like to leave this town. I realize these issues are complicated due to the litigation, but that cannot be the deterrent to doing the right thing. I have listened to residents like Marion and Kathleen Henner, who are already suffering serious illnesses. And it parallels in my mind to what happened to my town in Pompkin Lakes, where the cancer rate and other serious illnesses are still high. Being a small town there, I knew practically everybody in town, and still remember the feeling of caring about neighbors who's being diagnosed with serious illnesses. Eventually, my own father was diagnosed and had to come to pancreatic cancer. My family lived on the other side of town. We were in the year of the factory. I just always seek to prevent what happened there happening here. The evidence of the seriousness of this issue is mounting. It simply can't be covered up and forgotten. It is my sincere hope that you'll put aside party royalties and speak up for our community.
Thank you. Would anybody else in the public push to be here? Yes, ma'am.
Marion Emery, Three Canal Street, Ledwin. The council and the DEP both pushed for me to go to Robert Wood Johnson to Dr. Lavoie, and I went and wa, wasted a day of work. He did no tests and told me to continue to stay in my home with my air purifiers and the windows closed, and when I go out, to continue wearing my gas mask. So in other words, I am to continue to be a prisoner in my own home. I'm also to, he also told me he would get in touch with my primary physician and has not done that. Also, my mother had been talking to him for me because I could not do so from work, and said the entire attitude had changed from being concerned on Friday and losing all concern by Tuesday. And all I would like to know is who talked to him on the council or from the DEP between then and the time I saw him? I would also like to say that I have been asked by a couple of coun, by one council member, and offended by the question of whether or not I'm really as sick as I say I am. And the answer is yes. I have two pictures here that I'm going to show you of me Sunday night and of me another night. One of is of me with my face so swollen that it was hard for me to swallow. I still can't move my mouth, my teeth, from each other, and that's why I'm talking on this today. Because I have RSD and my doctor told me that the, um, due to the environmental issues, it's causing my RSD to get aggravated. And I am having to wear pain patches at night. And I have people coming up to me, somebody coming up to me from you guys, asking me if I'm really as sick as I am.
I'm unaware of anybody saying anything like that, because we've been sort of.
I do.
I had somebody come up to me and ask me that. And it, it affects me. I come up here and I am sick after I come up here, but I come up here hoping every week that you people will do something and not just say you do, but that you will act.
Mary, who asked you that question?
Yeah, why don't you guys figure it out yourself?
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have.
We're behind you. We're behind you. Go ahead, tell me.
What's your answer to her? Yeah. What concern does Roxbury have? You're doing a good job, Mary. Continue.
Can I ask you a question? Did you speak to Dr. Leoy when you were at the Robert Wood?
No, I did not. I had a doctor, Lavoie, and I was told that he was going to come, and I have an email that he was going to get in touch with my primary care doctor the next day and call me the next day, and he still has not gotten in touch with me.
What's, can you spell it?
I'm not exactly sure. I have to go right now.
I'm not sure we should be contacting the doctor regardless.
There's no kinds of, there's no kinds of regulations that, uh, we're going to play against.
It's the doctor's thing that you gave us.
I think you need to be very, very careful.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And I, I come up here every week and I'm sick after I leave here. I'm sick while I'm here. And I just, this is about asked to me a couple of months ago, and I've been letting it fester in me, but I can't let it fester anymore. And I just want it brought out that there are people up there asking me that. And I should not be cornered like that and ask a question like that. You're supposed to be helping us.
We are, and nobody should.
No, I feel like you're not.
Do you have any other questions, ma'am?
No, here are the pictures.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the public push to be here?
That is me on Sunday night with a swollen head, neck, swollen eye, and my patches because I could not move.
Anybody else in the public push to be here?
I'll read this real quick and then you guys can answer. Aaron Markworth, 36 Conclaim Flanders. I would like some clarification as to what the final disposition of the site would be in light of the recent Raritan Headwaters Association findings. According to the 2011 SCP Site Remediation Plan that the DEP backed and approved, Fenmore is around 102 acres, of which 60 were used as landfill. The current cap only covers 15, which required Phase 1 of the SCP remediation. SCP accepted materials under a faulty DEP administrative consent order that allowed uncontrolled CND fines and alleged hurricane sandy waste. Bernardi may be a convicted felon and have done improper things, but the DEP is just as bad, and its timeless council treats the DEP's actions with more skepticism and questions their motives concerning Roxbury's long-term welfare. The Highlands Council was also a party to the problem by issuing a hasty incomplete brownfield designation and improper redevelopment waiver. This waiver was only meant for industrial sites, not brownfields. Now that the legacy landfill law has been passed and Fenmore is half remediated pursuant to state industrial remediation and solid waste public codes, the full 60 acres of the landfill must be remediated and cannot be left in the current haphazard state with a problematic scrubber and 15-acre cap if it does remain endangered in public health. Who will be responsible for remediating the 45 acres that were used, the other 45 acres that were used as landfill? The additional 42 acres of the site can be left alone if they are uncontaminated. But now that part of the site has been disturbed, the original DEP plans and law require proper remediation of the entire site, not just the current 15-acre site that SCP disturbed. Otherwise, the premise still stands that environmental concerns exist according to the most recent DEP assessment that allowed the project to start in the first place. Today's current state of the, of the landfill is not acceptable or consistent with the Highlands Regional Master Plan. The emergency order to take over the landfill to fix the H2 gas issue was just to stop residents' complaints and cover what the DEP allowed SCP to accept. It was never meant to solve the entire Fenmore problem and its effects on the water quality impairment and health. As far back as 2005, there was no immediate environmental concern according to their investigations. And then all of a sudden in 2010, when there's an opportunity to put in solar, Fenmore becomes an issue and has to be fixed. They basically broke it, and now they can't fix it. The residents have tired of waiting for overdue stack test results and want to know what they are breathing and what's making them have health issues. There needs to be more testing of the entire site to know if it's still an immediate environmental concern. And if necessary, this council should be willing again to sue both the Highlands Council, the DEP, and other responsible parties to get answers and actions to ensure the health and property values of residents of Roxbury. Start being proactive instead of being reactive. Follow through when the residents are promised responses to their questions. We don't want New Jersey's 115 Superfund site in Roxbury, but Fenmore is like an untreated open sore if not properly remedied. Water impairment and low scores of 18 will not improve on their own. It's time this council asks more questions of the DEP and is more transparent with answers so that this issue can get on a permanent path to resolution.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public push to be heard?
No, no responses to the, as to the disposition of the site?
Actually, we've responded to it many times. It might even be on the website, but it's, it's inactive litigation on multiple fronts. So how can we give a plan if we don't, or in the middle?
So, so the active litigation prevents you taking any ownership or providing any direction as to what the final, the final site.
Correct, especially when that's what the litigation is about.
So that means you're, you're not capable of doing your jobs because you're.
Because obviously you have a weird sense of what your job is because.
You're supposed to keep the residents notified and provide transparency.
We, we, we have been. We've been active. You're aware of it.
I think there's so many outstanding questions here that you guys are incapable of addressing that this will go on every week.
My name is Bob Peslay. I know that I'm in the road. And just curious that you had two weeks to maybe lament on the letter I wrote and, and the response from, from Senator Wayland. I, I'd like to know what you think about it, because.
I think he's an idiot.
Pardon me?
I think he's an idiot.
I think it's, he's more than an idiot. And, and, and my problem is that from the beginning, this is where I think, I think that this, that we need to go back, because I want to, I want to read you something from his campaign ad. You go on, on YouTube and, and, and listen to this yourself. Jim Wayland tough. In Trenton, he stood up to corrupt politicians. He demanded higher fines and longer prison sentences for those politicians who ripped us off. Now, Wayland is working to stop officials from getting rich off government contracts and requires independent audits to reduce waste and fraud. Tough enough to fight for us. This guy is corrupt. He's corrupt. This is where it came from. They, he got this law passed in a unanimous vote where everyone went to, to Trenton and pleaded in front of these people. It was that, they made a mockery out of our township. Everyone there. Like I said, they're the political gladiators. Who's, who's the corrupt people in Trenton? Why did I feel like I did when I went there? Because I felt like I was amongst evil. There's a dichotomy. I said it last time. The dichotomy is the same as it's been forever. It's good and evil. I know where I stand, and I know where a lot of other people stand. And it's not complicated. We made it complicated for ourselves. It's not that complicated. I, you know, I, I listened, uh, Assemblyman Buco to your father in, on YouTube in the debate with, with Paul Sarbo. This man's berating your father, asking him where the tax increases are in his, in his proposal. It's not in the proposal. It's not in the bill, what he was going to do here. They just do it. That's how the law works. That's where they hide. We're not going to fix this here. I'm not here, I, there's nothing that you guys could do. When I told you in the courtroom, Fred, you were politically paralyzed, you were. Your dead pain in Bling, Bling Wilson, she's a puppet. We're, you're all puppets. I could see the strings. We have to go back. You can fight these people. They caused it. This is where, this is where, where it is. I'm, I, I, if I, if I'm wrong, someone help me to understand. Maybe I'm ignorant. If I'm wrong, I, I need help with this. Because I don't care about the monitors, but I do care about one thing. Care about this woman here? Because I lo, I said I love this town. That's an abstract construct. I love people. I love my neighbors that haven't lived. I, you know, I ha, I, I said I'd never get up here and, and plead my, my own sufferings. My wife needs an inhaler now. And I'm not going to say for sure that this is why, but the possibility is real. And, and we're not going to, we're not going to fix this argument amongst each other. We need to go back to Trenton collectively and stand in front of these people, stand up to them, and, and make them fix this. We can't live like this. We can't live with the psychological toll of this hanging over our heads. It is a great town. It's great, the things that are happening. I think we could go back there, but not like this. Because we can't hide from this. We can't.
Anybody else in the public push to be heard, please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to, my name's Carl Fennett. I live in two places, in Dover and in Roxbury. My first question is, and I spoke to Mr. Rass about this today, and I gave him a bad time, but that's too bad. And I also left you a message, Mr. Mayor. I'm having a problem. I'll, I'll get to my Fenmore stuff in a minute. You and you should have talked about it because I asked you both to discuss it before we got here. And that is the screw-up in my backyard where there's a, where there's a septic that they can get plowed under. And Mr. Rass, thank you very much for at least telling me that permits were taken out by previous owners. And you guys, excuse me, they got that, not you guys, your, I know you weren't here, but your, uh, uh, town engineers got the permits and did not a thing. Now, I'm stuck with that, but I'm not going to be stuck with it, gentlemen. I expect you guys to come back and tell me. Don't worry, Carl, we'll take care of that. We screwed up. Now, please, don't tell me that you didn't, because you guys did. It's your job. If, you know what? If there was no, there's such thing as a permit, don't even bother to give a mouth.
Carl, as I told you the other night when we spoke, I, he mentioned it to me. I had a meeting before this meeting, so I haven't had much time to do anything.
But you told me a week ago you were going to talk to him. You didn't have to.
I didn't talk to him.
You didn't talk to him twice. You wouldn't have pulled me.
We needed the information, Carl.
Okay, go ahead, come on, listen. Go.
So let me, let me try, Mr. I hope I'm successful with, I'm done.
The only thing to be successful is to tell me that you guys made an error, and I'm not going to be responsible for your screw-up.
Uh, Carl, after we spoke this afternoon.
Yeah.
Uh, I went back to construction again. They've gone back offsite. We're looking for some additional permits as well. But let me just go over ver, I, well, I don't want to take this time.
Don't take this time.
I can get with Carl.
I agree with that. Don't take this. I agree with that, don't take this time. Now, Mr. Mayor, positive now, positive statement, real positive, has to do with Fenimore. One year ago, you wrote a letter to DEP, I wanted to bring it here tonight, Kathy's too sick, so she couldn't print it out, and I'm too busy working on my mother's house, the house in Roxbury and my other house in Dover. That letter was the finest letter I've ever seen written by any council members, and you guys, it's health and safety, you guys were terrific, wanted us, you're here for us, and all of a sudden, you rolled over and played dead, and we got this mess with babies like this are sick, and other people are sick. My wife is sick, my daughter is sick. I know, you guys keep saying, "I don't smell anything, I don't smell anything." Well, you know what? Smelling don't count, but people feel, and they're sick. And the other thing is, Mr. Mayor, that gentleman right there, where you weren't given enough time to talk to you guys, which is Poloni, he went to the Highlands Council as well, I don't know if you remember that?
Yes, I did.
But he did, and you know what you gave that poor man, you insulted the crap out of him, three minutes like you gave him here. Now, that's Poloni. Now, one more thing, one more thing, one more thing. Uh, the Highlands Council said, "Don't smirk, this is important stuff." The, the Highlands Council said, "We're going to have a special committee, they're going to consult different people, and they're going to go out and get testing done, people who don't even know anything about that, and then we're going to have a committee lobby." So you tell me, Mr. Mayor, tell me, what are we going to do about that, because you know what? This sounds like a bunch of horse crap. I'll tell you one other thing, Mr. Smith, we had to clean up the river, not one of you guys were there, not one! And that's the cleanup, not one. So, let me ask about, what are you going to do about this gentleman right here? He belongs there with his team. He's smarter than everybody else. His team's smarter than anybody else, so what are you going to do?
Mr., I don't know what qualifications his team has, first of all, second of all...
Whoa, 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 whoa! I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Carl, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep my temper, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You don't know what kind of qualifications he has?
Can I, can I finish talking?
Not when you...
No, no.
Yes, you can.
The Highlands is working with Mr. Rath and the rest of the council, and that's where I'm recusing myself from the Highlands side, but I can't be aware on the township side.
Yeah, you can talk to those guys in the Highlands.
Can I, can I finish talking?
Yeah, give me more time, go ahead.
Uh, I'm working with the Highlands staff, which is also pretty reputable on these types of things, on the types of testing to be done up at the site, taking into account Mr. Kibler's report as well.
He's going to be working with you, on the job, working with you? Yes or no?
That's not, that's not up to us, it's the Highlands Council.
Yeah, but you associate with them, even though you recused yourself, you talk to them!
I do not talk to them when it comes to staff dealings on the Highlands...
I know, I close doors!
No, because it's inappropriate, Carl.
You don't? You don't talk at all?
It's inappropriate, so no, I do not. If you would do something like that, that's on you, I don't.
I don't, don't say that.
Well, don't, don't say I did.
This man ought to be part of that, and you guys know it.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, you're welcome, I'll see you in part two.
Got it.
Uh, anybody else in the public wish to be heard, please raise your hand, just in front.
Patty Iancum, Toby Drive, Suckasun. Due to all the spikes and the shutdown of the scrubber, I'm very concerned. Mr. Rath has said that there is a protocol, and some things are not implemented. The warm weather is coming, and that's something that we all are looking forward to, we enjoy, and I'd love to be outside, but my question, I'm fearful now, my question to each one of you is, do you recommend that we can open our windows here in Roxbury?
I do.
You recommend it? I want that, yeah, I want this to be known, that you are recommending this. Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
We're not going to go around and query each person, but I want to do something off the line.
Is, is any one of you also afraid to open your windows?
I've been at some of your houses, and they've all had their windows open.
Mr. Hall, do you have comment?
No, I look...
I'm fearful to open my windows. I, I mean, the weather is getting nice, and I'm fearful. It's, it's a horrible thing to go home, it's a beautiful day, and you just feel like you don't want to open your windows because you're so afraid. Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
I live on a bottom of a hill, I have my windows open.
Okay, so...
So that's me.
It doesn't bother any of you? But it does me, and I'm going to ask Mr. Rath if we could request to have a new protocol to notify the public if there is a spike, so that I know if I have my windows open, I can shut them. Is there anything else we can do? Because you're saying things are not implemented to notify the, the public.
That's not accurate.
No, I'm saying that I, I, I give direction, I have to verify whether there was implementation on that.
I think we could...
But that was when a unit was down.
Yeah, that was when a unit...
Right, but how do I know when the unit is down? Say, my windows are open, and I don't know.
But if there was, if there was mid-readings that were higher, because it would be down, if that met the criteria, then a notice would happen now.
Right, but say now it's in the middle of the night, we have windows open when we're sleeping, am I going to get up and check, keep constantly checking?
If the monitors go up and maintain the level that they need to, where, where a notice to go out, it would.
Yeah.
That hasn't changed.
You would get, you would get it, if you reach, if you look at the, the protocol and you look at the levels, if you get an exceedance that's verified or where it's, or certain amount of time, then yes, you'd get a note, you'd get an alert.
On the reverse 911, is that, we will get that?
Yes, and that's what we were doing, is when we actually had admissions, if you recall, we would send out alerts, sometimes two times a day, three times a day if you go back two years ago, before they had a system, before they had...
I, I have never gotten any alerts, I...
The alerts, the alert would have sent to Respite Centers, oh?
I have never gotten any alerts. I, I beg to differ on that.
It's not a townwide, yeah, you signed up for it.
It's, and it's also scary too, because there's times I go over to Jefferson School, I work in the school system, I'm fearful going over there, and these kids are going outside, I mean, they were out today. I know the weather's nice, and how do we really know if we're safe out there?
Well, we're all waiting eagerly, one of the, one of the agencies that residents at the township did bring in was the ATSDR. They get all of the data, the ATSDR is a federal agency, and one of the things they have told us is if ever they run into something that is an immediate hazard, they would notify us immediately. So, I have, got to tell you, I think we're all a little frustrated and delayed in reports, but they've never come back with all of the data we sent us and said, "It's an immediate hazard, don't open your windows, stay inside," or any of those things.
Thank you for your...
Right, can we trust them, that is the question. And just one other thing too, because I do walk a couple miles every day, and when I'm, you know, I'm out walking, and who's going to notify me, hurry up, get back in if these alerts...
If you had your cell phone...
Didn't come on your cellphone, well, that's what I mean, so, so I think we should consider a better protocol to notify the public instead of keeping everybody in the dark. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to be heard, and any issue, yes, sir.
Hi, Brenda Isherwood, you forgot Suckasun, I really didn't plan on getting up and saying anything right now, but I am a little, I'm a little disheartened that you can actually give some people more than three minutes, which I have no problem with, but you were so abrupt in cutting off this gentleman when he was giving his speech from the RHA. I find that disheartening, and I found it actually a little rude, and actually the way that you're starting to speak to some of the residents is also a little rude, you're getting a little annoyed, and you're showing that in your verbiage and your tone, you, Mr. Mayor, and sometimes actually last week, Chris, you also did. I hear for the first time tonight, these people come from Kentville, and they've got a big issue. I feel for them, I really wish them good luck. I'm sure that's going to be a much easier problem for you to take care of for them than the Fenimore problem for the town. But I do wish them luck, because I know how difficult it is to control traffic on streets, because my street just had a traffic study done, and I'm waiting, thank you for the results of that and the outcome of the resolution to try and fix things. After it's paved in August, because I hear the funds are back, it'll become a drug strip again, more than it is now. Also, music box sometimes with the windows rattling. I also, my husband, the gentleman left, my husband sleeps with the windows closed, we got new windows, so they're more insulated, and every time, he sleeps for the past five years with earplugs in, so he can get decent sleep. In any case, is this, I, it's going to be beautiful weather tomorrow, going on with this way, he said, and I actually planned on my day, and I'm taking tomorrow off, I'm taking a vacation day. Plan on riding my bike from my house. Plan on riding a couple hours, plan on maybe heading over up Mount Roanoke. Is the scrubber going to be down tomorrow, I heard?
They said, they said it would be, it would be down for approximately three days, that would only be the second day at least.
So, do you know whether I'm better off riding my bike over in that area when the scrubber's on or when the scrubber's off? Maybe Bill can help you with that answer also. Anybody know?
I'm not going to, you can come to sit.
Nobody knows whether, so you all don't know, and maybe I'll ask Bill. Um, am I better off riding, like, tomorrow off, they're so excited about riding their bike?
Why don't you, why don't you address, why waste your time when you could ask us to...
That's okay, I can spend my time the way I want, but thank you for your concern.
That's not our, if you have any other comments, we'll have to...
Okay, so you don't want to hear what Bill has to say?
We hear what Bill has to say all the time.
I, I'd like to hear what Bill has to say, can I hear what Bill has to say? Will you allow that?
Sure.
Okay, am I better off riding my bike when the scrubber's down or when the scrubber's on right now? Because what you said actually really scared me.
I don't know, because no one knows what's coming out of it, when it's right, when it's operating.
Okay, so, so it could, so you don't know unless you know what's coming out of it, so there we go, so until we actually really know what's coming out of it and what's really going, so what we're breathing in, and like I said, what Bill said really scared me, and then poor Marion had me in tears. And that's almost why I didn't get up. But, but thanks for 100 best towns of 2011, not today.
Anybody else in the public wish to be heard, yes, sir.
Name's Ron Watzner, I live in Seven Now, I'm on the Highlands. There was an article my wife brought to my attention in Roxbury Register, it says the owners of the Fenimore landfill want state officials and workers to vacate the site, but that's not all. A filing submitted, in a filing submitted to the Supreme Court Friday, Strategic Environment Court said the site should be returned in the same condition as it was when it was maintained, which kind of scared me. So, my question to you is hypothetically, what if he did win, and he got the profit of that, what's the likelihood that he would continue doing what he did?
I think it's very highly unlikely, because now the site's capped, there's a drainage system, a gas, a gas extraction system installed, it's highly unlikely, and the lower court's order was pretty specific, and what it said is, and I've spoke about this in a couple of other meetings, I don't think you were here, but what it said is that at the time that order was issued by the commission, they based it on conditions that existed before that law that gave him the power to do that wasn't active, and the court said that was inappropriate. You can't use conditions that existed before the law took place to prove that you met the conditions as well. They had to take conditions after the law took place and show that they met the requirements of the law. And when you look at that, at the time they took over the landfill, the conditions out there were pretty horrific, and they continue to be pretty horrific way past the day that the landfill was taken over by the DEP. So, the DEP is pretty confident, I'm pretty confident, that they'll meet the letter of the law and, and will move forward with the final cap in the project, so I don't think it's likely at all that, that the landfill will be turned back over to Mr. Benardi, because on top of that, there are a number of court cases right now that have proven that Mr. Benardi didn't file the ACO, just before someone made a mention that the ACO did not prohibit him from dumping as many fines as he wanted to in the landfill, and that's incorrect. The contract and the ACO that he entered into with the state had specific percentages of materials that he could accept during the closure of that landfill. He violated those rules. That's part of the litigation that's, that's ongoing now. So there's a number of violations that occurred up there, plus the whole ownership issue. You remember that you, we all saw Mr. Benardi saying that he owned the property, and then when he was quoted on television saying, "I have no ownership at all," to the wife. So there's a whole host of legal issues that are out there that I think would prohibit this landfill from being turned back over to Mr. Benardi.
Well, he actually, uh, by the definition of the law, was able to go into contract with the state for this. When I testified down in Trent, uh, I'm trying to think, what's the attorney's name?
Brendan?
Brendan, uh, no, not Brendan, uh, for the E...
Oh, the E...
Kenny.
Kenny.
Ken, Bob Ken.
Right, he, he took me aside and he said that the law, again, you talk about corruption and how laws can change, somewhere along the way, he was allowed to do what he did because the law had been changed around to say if he was dumping, if he was collecting and dumping on the property, his own waste, he couldn't go into contract state, but because he was accepting other people's, he can do that. So even though he's a felon, what he was doing was legal.
Well, I'm not talking about the fact that whether he was a felon or not, and...
Well, you said that he could enter...
No, no, what I said is, whether or not he even has a fine in contract is that issue, because ownership in that property is an issue now.
Right.
So, not the whole...
So you think that he'll, he'll never get that?
I don't, I don't foresee that.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to be heard, please raise your hand.
First I wanted to thank Bill Kibler for driving all, all this way to give a three-minute presentation, which he should have had a lot more time to give. You guys should have afforded him the opportunity to speak in front of you, in front of all these people, instead of being squished into three minutes. It's really a travesty what's going on here, and seeing residents cry, being affected by their health, it is devastating for me. And personally, this is the only reason I'm here, because I don't even live in this town anymore, and I wouldn't do that either, you know, I just wouldn't, I'm here for the people. That's the only reason I'm here, I'm wasting my Tuesday nights and a lot of my other personal And by the way, I timed Bill Kibler, he had two and a half minutes.
That is my...
That is accurate, I started my watch, and then you spoke, and then he started his presentation, so...
I have the timer right here.
Did you guys receive the email from Bill?
I went.
Uh, I think it was this morning, asking for a Fenimore update?
No.
Yeah, I, I did see it, and I, I did see it.
There, there was no update that you could provide today?
The only thing I can say is that I did follow up with the DEP, and I can tell you that I anticipate something to post on the website as early as possible with some of those questions.
So, the answers to the questions now?
Because that's the, that's the responsibility.
Well, I appreciate that, Chris, I wish I wouldn't have to waste my time asking for an update, which I've done now multiple times in the last four months that I've been, that I've been asking for updates, and that you've taken it off the agenda.
No, whenever there's updates, we give them.
It's not on the agenda anymore.
You still think...
Fenimore, if you go back in your minutes, you'll see Fenimore as an agenda item and updating.
Whenever we've got it on the agenda, we give an update, and we have some things to talk about.
Sometimes you do, and sometimes you don't. I can go back to the video and show you that.
It's fine, okay, got it.
So there's going to be an answer to some of these questions on, on the website or now?
No, thank you.
Last meeting, you indicated that the NJD needed water testing at Fenimore, the, the results will be in in some amount of time, and I had asked... And I had asked what testing protocols did they use? And you sent her in, find out and get back to us.
So, if we get the report from the N J D P and then our people look at it, we'll get that information out. Because that's helpful, just a second. That's helpful to us too as we develop the going forward. We've said this many times. What we're going to be tested for, what would be recommended we be tested for in addition to what's already committed and along with what the high winds catch. Thirteen, twelve fifty.
Right, so have you guys begun your testing yet or you have not?
No. Which?
Your testing, the township's testing on the water.
I'd have to check on that. It's very short. I'd have to check very shortly. That's the one we do at eight.
Right, but you don't know what to test for because you still have it for the D E P.
Well, we do a drinking water test as you go.
You're talking about drinking water test, right? You're talking about the tests.
You were talking about groundwater. You were talking about doing groundwater testing through the grant?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, no, that's high winds. That's fine. No, we haven't started that.
I've heard before that you were testing the seven perimeter wells.
The D E P.
Oh, so the D E P did testing in seven wells, not five? Because you said five, that's why I'm asking. And I was surprised at that answer.
Left to consider that five.
One comment about the notifications. You know, the D E P, as Bill explained, is a pretty serious situation or potentially a serious situation depending on what's coming out of the stack. Which of course, we don't know what the heck is coming out of that stack. We get notifications about snow removal. We get notifications about what's happening in Roxbury, what's all good. You know, you think maybe it might be important to send out something about that which could really affect somebody in their health. Because there are a lot of people that use that park still. They still fish down there. Depending on which way the wind's blowing, you know, those people could be ones that are affected.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else in the public wish to be here? Please raise your hand. See, now we'll close the public portion. We'll move on to reports of Council议席和议员们. Council议席和议员们正在处理事务。Let's start with Mr. Husher.
Yes, Mayor. Last Saturday I had the privilege in honor of brilliant local citizens.
Please raise your hand. I recognize you. You have three minutes and one appears per individual. Anybody have anything to say in the second public session? Yes, ma'am.
Morning, Ted Stradich, running on Saturday. I just have a question. I noticed some town council meetings, there are these small officers in our station here sometimes, isn't that? Who makes the decision as to having this officer at a council meeting? What is the criteria for what reason? And does he get paid for it?
I'm sure it gets paid, first of all. Second of all, I was unaware. This one was here until just a little while ago and I don't remember any other meeting.
So.
Oh, Bill, we have had him in. We have, I have asked the police to attend the meetings just based on the dental safety of the public and the council's will to.
So, it's your decision, self-decision?
And he's on duty, not overtime or anything like that.
Right. But so, what is your criteria for making a decision that we need?
If there's, what I prefer, what I often like is if somebody is simply just in the building and available. But there are times that they're actually assigned over here by the chief, so.
Now, for what reasons? When do you decide? Tonight is tonight, I think we need somebody here for the safety of the public.
It could depend on the attendance and anything like that.
Do you have to report? Is there a record of saying why he's on duty here?
No.
Yeah. So, you don't have to tell anybody your reasons for why?
Again, my reasons would be how many people may be attending meetings.
So, it's based solely on the numbers of expectation of people attending?
Like I said, like I said earlier, it's public safety issues and just let us, and how many people might be attending the meeting?
And it's your self-discussion, it's not the chief?
I asked. Although the chief could, the chief could say, "No, Chris, I don't think we need him." But I don't know, you know, we work well together.
And does the council have that ability to request that as well?
They probably could, but we have not.
They could ask me not to do it.
Generally, no?
We haven't.
Okay. And you don't question why?
Again, I haven't gotten into any specifics with them tonight. Again, I've seen the chief here a couple of times because he's been here for some other events.
Right, I've seen that too. But I just, I was just curious as to why everybody's got some kind of.
It's been rare to my, to the best of my knowledge.
So, you felt it was some need here tonight?
Oh, well, we had a very large crowd. We had people all on the walls and everything else. You've got a lot of people there.
I don't question my decision, okay?
Oh, well, I do because I'm a gentleman.
I can appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to speak on any issue? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
I'd like to go back and ask Mr. Riley and Mr. Raths about that letter that I talked about before that I said was so well-written and went to the D E P about a year ago.
I don't recall which letter. I'm sure I could go look it up in here.
It was a letter that you guys wrote that talked about the health and safety and what was going on in Fenimore. And you guys were not happy with the issues that were going on up there. It really sounded to me when I read that letter, I think I, I don't remember anyway. I wanted to bring it tonight, but I couldn't. So, anyway, I'd like to know what happened and why you guys abandoned that particular issue? And if you abandoned it, for what reason?
First of all, as you should know, we've never abandoned anything to do with Fenimore landfill. The reference to the health and safety will be in all of our residents in Roxbury Township.
Oh, excuse me.
It's never changed. Whether you agree or disagree with that is your personal choice.
Oh, wait, that's not my personal choice, Mr. Mayor. Oh, Mr. Mayor, it's not my personal choice. You got, you got that lady over there?
That is your ten personal choices. That's not the point, is there?
It's not the point, Mr. Mayor!
No, no.
Try, I'm trying, man. It's not the, that's not the point. Health and safety, you said.
No, it is 100%.
Okay, it is 100% that, right?
Always and has been.
And you got people who are sick. And I keep hearing you guys.
We have not gotten anybody sick. We oppose this project law.
I will bet you $100,000 that you guys have gotten people sick. We haven't gotten anybody sick. I got one, for instance. I got two, Marion left.
Okay, no.
I got other names.
We're concerned about all of the individuals here. The council did not set this project up. The council did not approve this project.
Well, yes, you did, yes, you did. At that big meeting, you, you, and you wouldn't tell us what it was voted on. You said, "We, the board, says that we go on with the D E P's decision."
You're talking about trucking it out issue then?
No, I'm talking about going, continuing to go on with the D E P's doing. It's not talking about. You don't remember that?
No, you're confusing situations here. The original Bernardi coming into here is what was the problem. And that project was not done with council approval. You know this, Carl. I'm not going to sit here and go down this road.
Don't bother, okay? The people are sick in this town and you guys say there's nobody sick. Mr. Raths said.
I did not say nobody's sick. What? I never said nobody was sick.
Now, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I want to get into debate with you, but people in this town are sick. And that man over there, your CEO, says the numbers don't show anything. There is no problem. I'm not even putting out an alert. You know what? My wife comes up here, because I'm living in Dover, and all of a sudden she gets sick. That to me is an alert. But this man over here says, "Oh, that's not an alert." So, look over here, Mr. Riley. I'm talking with you.
I'm listening, Chris.
You're rude. Now, come on. You guys know that this is an issue. That poor woman before. I'm paying taxes here, I'm paying taxes in Dover. For what? I came to this town because I wanted a better place and what am I getting for it? Now, look up here, Mr. Riley.
I'm making a note, Carl.
You're taking a note?
Thank you.
Because you're looking at the clock and saying, "Oh, you're almost done."
You're done with your time, actually. I was letting you finish your term.
Well, tell me about that letter. Why did you guys abandon that?
Thank you for your comments, Carl.
Mr. Riley, please tell me.
We didn't abandon it. I've already said that, but you're not going to be happy until you hear what you want to hear.
It's not what I want to hear. It's not what I want to hear, it's much worse.
Thank you for your comments, Carl. Would anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any issues?
Hi, I'm Brittany Schuler, working for the state. You're saying that this is just a regular, I'm sorry, this is a regular duty officer? What would he be doing if he wasn't here?
I'd have to ask the chief where his assignment would be, then I could follow up with that.
Can I ask him? What would he be doing?
No, you can't.
I can't, maybe I was. I really, I mean, there's not that many people here and I've never really seen personally or heard of anything terrible happening, at least not in the recent past. And I think he could be much better service to the general public where he would normally be.
I will take.
That's my personal, my personal request. I was at the Raritan Headwaters cleanup over at Ledwood Basin last Saturday. And I'll probably share some pictures with you of some garbage stuff you got out of Carl and Bob Maderos and another woman, Debbie Post, from Ashland Flanders, over by Dr. Spruick, down in Flanders section of Main Street. Excuse me.
She's in Chester and Debbie Post.
No. But in any case, she told me it was Main Street minors. So, there was a huge ravine that I think probably a whole dump truck of garbage was dumped in, including tires, quarter johns, and it rugs, pillows, blankets, besides other things. And.
Where's the location?
We cleaned it all up.
They cleaned up?
We cleaned it all up. But I'll send you the pictures and I'll show you, you'll see exactly where it is. But it looks like that garbage, because the rug had brooded into the dirt. The amount of garbage that was there was very visible if you just looked down the hill or walked along the string and looked up. And it must have been there 10, 15 years. I find that disgraceful. But it's cleaned up now, thanks to volunteers and the town person that helped spearhead this section of the Raritan Headwaters cleanup, which was done all over three or four counties. Also, I know this is something I've spoken about before and I never mentioned, but the old D P W building that you mentioned that was torn down? You said that it had a little bit of remediation that needed to be done?
I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd classify it as a little remediation. I mean, that may be what you said, that it is being remediated.
Wait, wait, okay, so what did you say? I don't recall exactly verbatim.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay. But there is some remediation that needs to be done?
Yes, yes. Very near process of doing it right now.
Okay. I just remember hearing someone say at a council.
Nothing tonight.
The council meeting, not tonight, no, about a month ago. But it used to be the old Sagatana School. So, it was basically a historic site.
No, actually, it was not classified as.
It was not classified, but it really should. I think people think it should have been a historic site.
We met with the historic committee.
Yeah, I know, I know. That's a shame that it wasn't saved. And I was at the meeting when a council person stated to Marion and I heard it, that when they asked, "Are you really a sicker?" I said, "You are." Just so I could say that publicly as opposed to just saying, "Oh, it's there." And I was in the, in the audience. And one last thing, and I'm just going to go back to last fall and I'll ask you a press. Is the parking lot light on the northeast side? The parking lot being fixed anytime soon?
Actually, I don't believe it is. We did get the lights on the bank here done, done. And the reason for that is because it's a complete conduit that's out into that system, so.
And it's underground, you told me.
Underground.
Could be done when it was frozen. It's not frozen, so it's not going to get done ever now?
I don't, I'll check with Mr. Pluth, but I don't know any plans to do it.
So, it was going to get fixed and now it's no plans for as far as now?
They found out that it was the conduit they didn't want to rip up the parking lot for the wind light.
Okay. Okay, then maybe you should sort of take the whole down and put an "out of service" sign so when people pull in and expect it to be light where they park and when they park, it's light out and then they get out there, they've got to walk over to a dark spot because that's what happened to me last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public wish to be here? Please raise your hand.
It was Tracy Chervinak.
I'm sorry, I'm forgetting.
Tracy Chervinak, who lived on West Dewey Ave. Originally, I was here for the county concrete disaster and the trucks coming by, which if you've ever lived in that neighborhood, it's really sad to see that now there are no trees, there's nothing there. It's just plain and the trucks are loud. They go fast. I know that I have sent emails to several people, actually the Public Police says one, regarding the truck speeding on Dewey Ave at all hours of the day. We have multiple, multiple children that live on this town, on this county road, and the trucks, they don't care. There was a speeding sensor put in last year. It doesn't help. And it doesn't work at 2:30 in the morning. It doesn't work. It only works when the sun is shining. So, it's not helping. So, that's what I have to say about Dewey Ave. But my mother-in-law lives on Emmett Road. She's 89 years old. Never been sick a day in her life. Very healthy, very stubborn. Within the past month and a half, she's been to the doctor five times. She's now on an inhaler, a nebulizer, and they found nodules in her lungs. She doesn't smoke. So, I want to know, is this from the Fenimore issue? And I just also want to say, just with observations, the only councilman that I really feel cares about this whole thing is Brett Hall. I think you have smirks on your face. You interrupt.
I have smirks on my face.
Yes, you do, yes. Yes, you do. De Filippo, you also have smirks on your face. Paul, first of all, is the only one who cares about this whole, about this whole issue. And you can argue, you can interrupt people as many times as you want, but people are going to sick. And it's not just by coincidence. And you can either choose to be a politician or you can choose to be a human being. But that's something that you have to sleep with every day of your life. If you want to be a politician and you want to play politics and you want to go down that road, have at it. But if you actually want to care, you want to show that these people of Roxbury that you care, you need to get out there, you need to talk to people, you need to go door to door. Not just put up signs, not just be on the internet because honestly, my mother-in-law does not have access to the internet. So, to see, to go to Facebook and see the alerts, it's not going to help her. And I think that you have to grasp the concept that not everyone has access to internet. There are older people here that do not have access to internet, who cannot access the alerts. And you can sit here and you can judge whatever you want to do, but at the end of the day, gentlemen, this is on you. This is on you. You can either choose to do something about it and fight for your people or you can do nothing and be politicians.
Anybody else?
Bill Morocco-Lazar, Stroud, and Ledwood. She raises some pretty good points and I'm not going to beat it that horse, but the one thing that I will say is the alerts. And, you know, I signed up for an alert system so I can get alerts on my phone, text message. How come we can't have the alerts like that? I don't want to scour Facebook every day out of my work. I don't use the internet. I don't want to have to go to your township website to see what I have to do with my wife and daughter who may be at home. I want to get an alert on my phone. And you haven't been sending those. I get them for snow plowing, township events. Why don't I get them for Fenimore? The A T S V R actually suggested that you continue to use that alert system and ignore that advice. So, you don't have to answer me, but please consider. There's no reason, you have this great system, let's use it. The other thing I want to say is, I'm surprised how many people came out today, but the site is still affecting a lot of people. This is just a small sample of people that are, you know, in this town that are affected by the site and its current condition. The D E P has been there for a year. You know, they're trying to cap it. And there's major reliability issues with the equipment. It's always going down. Stuff is corroding out, stuff has to be replaced, burns out, instruments go down. Doesn't seem like it was designed that great, in my opinion. Doesn't seem like it was designed that, that great, in, in my opinion, the reliability is very poor, and every time the reliability is poor, we get exposure, and exposures may be small, but those exposures exceed what you would find in rural neighborhoods, we shouldn't have to live with that exposure, any of it, you know, we shouldn't have to live with these monitors, you know, kids in the schools having to go outside on the playground, on the ballfields, these types of things are what's ruining the township. There's all these great things, but then there's those things. You know, there's no safeguards or, or interlocks on the site, you have these smokestacks in town, that we don't know how long they're going to be there, they're, they're, they're killing the property values, no one can tell us what's coming out of them, there's so many open issues, this has been going on for over a year, at some point, you got to draw a line at the stand and say to yourself, "We got to take a different route," and I understand it's not your decision, but you could have an opinion, and you could have a backing, and you could make a statement, and at some point, you got to say to yourself, "We backed the wrong thing." Maybe it wasn't the wrong thing, but the way the DEP is doing it is the wrong thing. And I'm not saying we got to truck it out, but if we did truck it out, I don't think we'd be here today, I think this would be done, and as long as this stuff is still there, and it's not being managed appropriately, we're going to keep talking about this, how long is it going to go on for? I know I'm over my time, and I'll, I'll close.
No, you're actually not.
I'm, I'm just saying, at some point, you got to draw a line, Dan Mossy came up here, you remember him, and, and he, he had a question to the DEP, you know, what are the goals of the project, what are the metrics, how do you measure success, no one can answer that, how do we know whether done? Is it a PPV value, is it a smell, an odor, is it the stream gets clean? No one knows this, so how do you know that the project is successful? You have the 1% of sensitive people in the town that are still affected by the chemicals, some people think they're crazy, I don't think they're crazy, and you have a lot of experts, trust me, I have the emails I opened, saying that if this capping wasn't successful, please consider excavation, the Rutgers expert said that, Matt Syena said that, I have that in writing, from a letter to your dad, you know this. So you got to think to yourself, right now, we're in 2015, at what point, you got to draw the line and say, "You know what, we tried this, it's not working, we got to try something else." Thank you.
Anybody else in the public who wants to be heard, please raise your hand? Yes, ma'am.
Anthony Hart, 12th Amendment, Lane Sockasana, I would really like to amplify, agree with what Bill just said, that this whole experiment hasn't worked, it's not working. I would ask, are any of you now willing, that you have Bill Kibler's report, you have, you know, these issues with the stack, with the, with the incinerator, are you willing to meet with the EPA and ask for their intervention, for their, for their expertise, for their consulting on this, get another opinion? Is anybody willing to do that?
And again, uh, DEP has been approached in the past, and they defer to the DEP.
In the past, things are changing, things are fluid, I mean, if, you know, it's like you go to the doctor in the past, and your condition changed, you go back to the doctor, you don't just say, "Well, I went to the doctor two years ago," you know, you go back. So is anybody, are you saying you're not willing to?
We'll look into it, we'll look into it.
But you told, you told me probably about five times.
Well, you know, it's been an annoying project, so.
So nobody, basically, nobody's willing to go to the EPA, is that what I'm getting?
Any other comments or questions?
I would ask them to do stat tests, because I do believe that we are possibly in violation of the Clean Air Act, because that incinerator, this incinerator is covered by Clean Air Act, you maybe know more about this, Mr. Popco, than me, but I believe that they're required to do stat testing, they're required to be public, to be made public.
I'm disappointed we haven't had the stat test yet, and I guess it's because these units are down, and...
But that's not, like, this has been on and on and on, like, we, we're not going to just keep accepting, that's why I'd say, could you go to the EPA and have them intervene, and have them do the stat test or require the stat, does this time, like Bill said, to go to the next step? You know, there's got to be something else. Through my mind, I feel like whatever they put up there is a limit, if you got a car that every two months you had to replace a major part of it, you'd be, that would be like the lemon law, you want to take it back, I want another car, so, obviously, this, what they did here isn't working. We trusted the DEP, they mismanaged, and I think that, at the very least, take a meeting, I mean, what would it kill you to take a meeting with the EPA and say, "These are our concerns, we have people sick, we have these issues, help us out, consult with us," I mean, what would, what would the heart be in doing that? I don't, I don't see it. And just one other thing, um, this is just kind of a weird question, I noticed you were approving minutes for the past meetings, and they're all kind of out of order, is there a reason for that? Like, there's some from back in November, and some out...
I defer to the clerk, but that is not totally uncommon, uh, when they were getting caught up, when they were dealing with the bottom of the question, sometimes things were partially done, so it was easier to get some done that were partially done, others are fresher, so they got...
So there's no real reason for why it's so... Okay, all right, and then, um, just one more comment, Bob Maderos had mentioned about the difference in the monitors, and I think the point that was overlooked, you know, when he said one had spiked very high, and one was only at five, but the point that got overlooked is that he was sick that day, he felt he was outside, and he felt like he was going to pass out, so whatever the monitors were saying, he still was being affected by something, so it really didn't matter what the ratings were, or what it said, I mean, I think that's what should be investigated, there, that's why we really need the stat test, because I believe there's something else, something about hydrogen sulfide coming out of there that's making people sick, and maybe that's making them spike to a level where you always say you don't smell it, so it can't be hydrogen sulfide, and I can understand that, but maybe there's some other gases.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who wants to be heard on any issue, please raise your hand?
Bob Schultz, um, how many redundant monitors are there, Chris, other than, um, Roxy?
Six and eight.
Just six and eight, yeah, the two. That, that day, that, those spikes, I actually heard Bob Maderos, I think, two or three other people that day, that also were sick right around that time, when those spikes happened, so, they're picking up something, and I've been here, I've told you this many times, and I've asked, do you have, do you do air testing, uh, air grabs, you said you look into it, I've never heard anything since then, um, there's still something going on, and it really needs to be checked into, because if it's true that you're concerned about the quality and health of the residents...
That's true, that's true.
Then actions speak louder than words. And since there's only two redundant monitors, from my standpoint, and I'm sure the residents would agree with me, I would err on the side of caution, by the time the levels are actually checked by, whether it's Chris or employee, or somebody goes to the site, or whatever the protocols are to double-check that, it could be too late if residents were in the way of this toxic cloud that's coming towards them. And I'm sure the residents would also agree that we'd rather have false alerts than no alerts at all, we'd rather hear and see, "Oh, there's an alert," and 10 minutes later, "Oh, you checked it out and it's fine," that would give a people peace of mind to know that. And Chris, I have a question for you, actually, um, and I have one more comment after that. Um, did you call Mr. Kibler this morning?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And you told Mr. Kibler, Kibler not to come to the meeting?
I absolutely did not.
Interesting, because that's what, uh, Mr. Kibler said.
Why, why did you bring it up when Mr. Kibler was here?
Yeah.
I guarantee you, he would not say that, he was advised that he was not on the agenda, and he would have to revise, because Mr. Rats had spoke about it, in fact, I did find out that he spoke to him to late in the day, so.
It was a...
The accusations you want, but if you really wanted to know, you would have asked when Mr. Kibler was here.
Yeah, I...
I asked Mr. Kibler after last...
So, you said you had another...
This is the first opportunity I've had a chance to, because I didn't want to hear about this until halftime.
Okay. Did he ask you during the, during the break? No.
Okay, good.
We were actually talking about something else.
Okay.
So you, just to be clear, you did not say not to come to the meeting at all?
Let me make it real clear, Bob, under no circumstances did I tell Mr. Kibler not to come to the meeting, in fact, I simply said, there was a three-minute rule, I also indicated that we'd be looking, looking forward to working with him in the future, I will call Mr. Kibler tomorrow and have him respond to you directly. Mr. Mayor, on the three minutes, yes, not bill, it's not...
Oh, my gosh!
And my, my one last thought, um, from Mr. Kibler, actually, he said, um, because he did have to leave, since he drove such a, a long way to speak for three minutes, that there is truly a serious water issue up here, and that all of you really don't understand the science behind what is going on up there, and this is a serious situation which you need to take seriously.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who wants to be heard, please raise your hand? See, if not, we'll close the public portion, I believe we have an executive session.
Three, four. Ready? Landmark. Nine block, nine block. Two percent. Turn line privilege. Score connection application. Score connection application.
Sue, sue. It's actually...
And personnel, non-union shelter.
Mayor, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm under your word. Slapjack.
Slapjack.
Slapjack, see? I'm really doing, I'm the council of Roxbury, County Morris, New Jersey, authorizing conferences to county councils, the public excluded, whereas if it's deemed appropriate, county councils, just a matter, here and after, mention the government of the public in the provision of RS 10443, section B of the Open Public Meeting Act, now therefore be a result, uh, statute discussed, known, layback position, nine, two, nine, one, two, ten, attorney, third, bridge, connection applications, personnel, non-union salary wages, and litigation Fennor, shall be discussed by the county council without the presence of the public in this, and stated that these matters can be disclosed to the public from this.
In a second, please. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Here, I'll read you your call, okay?
See you, Mayor.